I will now call this meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded.
Here.
Vice Chair Hudak and Chair Williams.
Here.
Chair, you have eight commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Would you now please lead us in the salute and prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk, would you please read the statement on compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the administration building and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved.
Second. That was moved by Commissioner Granados and seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Mr. Garrettson?
Yes.
Mr. Granados?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Ida May 12th agenda.
We're at the communications before, not the minutes yet.
Yes.
Not aye.
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 Chair.
Aye. Thank you so much. Now, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, May 12th, agenda setting and regular meeting session and the minutes of the Thursday, May 26th, agenda setting and regular meeting. So I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Granados and seconded by Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. Clerk?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye to all.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye to May 12th agenda regular and abstained from May 26th agenda regular.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Abstained from Thursday, May 12th agenda and regular. Aye to Thursday, May 26th agenda and regular.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on each of the resolutions with one abstention on each of the resolutions as well.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. So please kindly state your name and your town of residence for our record. And if you are indeed speaking on a resolution on our agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and please adhere to the five-minute time limit. So, the floor is open.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and Dr. Garrettson. This is Bruce Patterson of Garwood. Resos, it appears there's two resos linked, 515 and 535, and these are two resos accepting and distributing 4.8 million and/or 4.5 million of federal super NOFA monies. I don't know what's the difference between those two, but you know, give a rundown to the public, what organizations are getting how much money and what is the county's share of that. Another, another two that are linked, 529 and 575. The reso has the county covering a shared service and $9.2 million of prescription and health benefits for the Union County VOTEC. This was touched upon previously. How much is the VOTEC actually paying the county for this? And yeah, 575 appears to be similar, but instead of 9.2, it's 8.2. So I really don't understand those two. Number 550, this change order is increasing Rataco Construction contract by 30%, now totaling $800,000. It appears it's a culvert, but what's the scope of work involved? How did it show up and what are the costs or impacted, such as engineering and construction management? A grouping of 557 to 560, this is a records management agreement with four counties for the towns to give information to the county through some cloud for the public's knowledge what information is now being shared. 569, this is given a contract to Momentum Telecom of Georgia for election maintenance and networking for three years, and it was explained about a private T1 cable. But this is, is this somebody new? What changed from the previous years? Number 570, BGIA/Acrashure is getting 3.2 million as a broker for stop-loss insurance from Blue Cross. In 2012 and again in 2021, the state comptroller had put out an audit and a report finding there are millions of dollars of wasted abuse found in government contracts through insurance and brokers throughout the state. The local management of BGIA/Acrashure is Gary Taft, who was caught indicted and penalized by the SEC for insider trading and fined $725,000. He was also forced to resign as Governor McGreevy's chief of staff, along with some other questionable dealing. In 2020, his company was investigated by the Attorney General for pay-to-play violations, although the Attorney General neither confirmed nor denied any resolution of the case. As a member of the public, we implore you to really scrutinize this company and its alleged spurious management and maybe go with a different broker. Question, how much BGIA/Acrashure is getting paid for this work? And also note that they have donated $31,000 in the last four years to you and your county cronies. 571, this is awarding a contract of $350,000 to SSDC of Michigan for analyzing and possibly retrieving Medicare savings, and it's a good idea, of course. However, this is going through BGIA/Acrashure as a subcontract. Why does BGIA have to get involved? How much is BGIA making from this? And why can't this contractor be hired direct by the county? 574, this is a collective bargaining agreement with Correction Officers PBA 199. How many COs are involved and what are the changes agreed to regarding salaries and benefits? 584 is a lawsuit settling Reginald Curry versus County of Union for 95 grand. Just explain or an overview of what that is. 585, Weiner Law Firm is receiving an initial windfall of 10 grand for a lawsuit titled Welding Materials versus County of Union Ed Els. Please give an overview of that case and who are the Ed Els involved? And then on the general comment, there's an executive session regarding a lawsuit Rivera versus UCPO. Give an overview of that case. And just one final comment to Commissioner Baker, and I said this years ago, but I might as well repeat it now. The government has no money. Rebecca Williams actually did touch upon it. It's all from us. It's all from the people. The government has no money. So keep that in mind, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The floor is still open? Okay, so there were several queries made, so I'm gonna ask folks to come up with the proper number. So for Resolution 515 and 529, Director Taylor?
So through you, Chair. Resolution 515 is indeed tied to 5, Resolution 535. The difference between the two is that 535 is accepting, 515 is modifying the budget to actually utilize those funds and bringing it into our general ledger to spend.
Thank you.
The other resolution that you asked about was 529, I believe?
Yeah, 529, yes.
529 is also linked to the Admin Services Resolution 570, 575, 576, and 577. There's a difference in the numbers primarily because there's different periods of time that we're covering in those resolutions, but it's dealing with the same issue of modifying prior resolutions and/or authorizing services tied to the VOTEC health benefits plan coming under ours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I think that's it. Okay. Director Graziano, there was a question about Resolution 550?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. This is the final change order for this project, the Sherdose Avenue Bridge. It's been going on for a few years now. So this, this change order is really involved with a lot of stuff, mainly the DEP changed some guidelines on the, on the excavation of, of the controlled fill or the contaminated fill. They lowered their requirements over the last couple of years of the project, which in turn allows us or requires us to remove more fill than we anticipated in the project. So most of this change order is for the excavation and the removal of the fill. There is also some credit change orders in here. We had a winter concrete extra that I think I brought to this board back in, probably in December of last year, that we did not have to use that because our winter was pretty light and they were able to work under the current conditions. So those are the most, there are, there is no construction management on this. This is the final change order for Rataco Construction, and again, it was a publicly bid project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Let's see, where was I? Oh, okay. Chief Debbie? Oh, there you are. Okay. Yeah, so there were questions. I didn't get all the questions, but there were, there was a question about Resos number 557 through 560. Yes.
Yes, Chair, through you.
Through you, I see.
This is a, an agreement for an RMS management system. So that's fancy for police reports. Fancy word for police reports. What we're gonna do is, these are partners in our dispatch center, these municipalities, and these municipalities will have access to a records management system that they're all gonna have basically for themselves, and this information will be theirs and theirs alone. There is also gonna be a information sharing portion of it, that the information will be dumped into a query server for the public safety of the police officers and the citizens as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Administrator Dorado, would you come, please, and offer a little more clarification about 569? Please.
Through you, Chair. Momentum Services, this is a renewal of a three-year agreement. The T1 line was installed in 2019, right after we began the transition to a new vote tabulation system. So it was in place ahead of the 2019 general election.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And let's see, Director Skatari, there were a couple of comments. I'm not sure if there was actually a question, but if you could just explain the process of using this company?
So for 570 and 571, these are broker recommended. We, we don't pay the broker. We actually pay Horizon for our stop-loss insurance, and then we actually pay SSDC only if they find someone who gets switched over to Medicare Disability Insurance. They get a set fee that we would pay them. So if they find no one, they don't get anything. I didn't really hear another question.
And the other was, the other question was about number 574, about the collective bargaining, the corrections officers?
Sure. In 2022, there's 36 employees in that union. For 2023, 2% increase across the board. And under the, I think they asked about the health insurance effective January 2023, premium contributions are revert to those paid under the July 2021 agreement.
Thank you so much. And then the last two questions were for County Council, 584 and 585, if you could just say what you can?
Yes, thank you, Chair. 584, a settlement of a litigation matter. This arises out of an inmate in our jail. Based on the rules of the jail, he was in the hospital ward and it created an issue with him being able to practice his religion. There was a disagreement between the inmate and the county as to whether we did everything we could and should have to allow him to exercise his religion. We believe we were correct in this, but it's in the federal courts. The mediator appointed by the federal judge recommended a settlement, which has been recommended to this board by the County Council's office and is before the board tonight to be approved. Part of the payment of the settlement will come from the company that ran the hospital ward and part from the county. It's really a financial decision that the risks of trial are too high, and based on the recommendation of the judge, we are proceeding with this, recommending the settlement. 585 concerns a new litigation matter concerning a traffic light on Bonnyburn Road in, actually in Watchung, but Union County has maintained that road since 1927. So we've been pulled into this case involving really Watchung and a development in their town, but because we've been sued, then we need to have counsel to protect the county's rights. I think also there was a question about the matter in closed session, which I can respond to if you like. And as I've said before, this is a, an ongoing litigation matter, so that I really can't comment on it. Other than that, it is a Open Public Meetings Act, I'm sorry, Open Public Records Act case, and at the time, it is settled or ended, then it'll be brought to the public's attention. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, County Council. The floor is still open? Okay, seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting, and I will ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2022-514 through 2022-595.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Abstained on 2022-560, aye to the rest.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions. With the exception of Resolution 2022-560, we have seven votes in the affirmative and one abstention.
Thank you so much. Well, looks like we're at Commissioner Reports and/or Comments. So starting at my far left, Commissioner Dr. Garrettson?
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge there were so many Juneteenth organizations and activities, including right here in Union County. I believe that the Urban League of Union County put together an array of all the posters of individuals that participated. Just want to congratulate them for being inclusive and making sure that everyone knew what was happening throughout the county. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Good evening, everyone. Last week, I attended graduation ceremonies for the Union County Vocational Technical High Schools in Scotch Plains and the Simon Youth Academy. It was very inspiring and wonderful to see all these young people in our community beginning a new chapter in their life. And on behalf of the entire Commissioner Board, I want everyone who has passed a milestone to know how much we appreciate their hard work and we wish them all success in their future endeavors. On another note, I just want to remind families with small children that Union County Free COVID-19 Vaccination Program is expanding to accommodate the recent guidance on the Pfizer vaccine for ages of six months to four years and the Moderna vaccine for ages six months to five years. This is a very big step for families that have gone without a vaccine throughout the pandemic. Please protect your loved ones, your children, and make an appointment now through our website at ucnj.org. If you are in need of emergency food assistance during the pandemic, our next walk-up event will take place at the Gerald B. Green Plaza in Plainfield this Saturday, June 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Thank you so much. This is all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. Like Commissioner Leon stated before, I had the pleasure of joining herself, Deputy County Manager Wagner and Director Anderson at the Simon Youth Academy graduation ceremony. And for those who are not familiar with this academy, it's a partnership between the County of Union and the Simon Mall system, in which its non-traditional high schools are created across local properties that belong to Simon Malls and provide another avenue for individuals who otherwise would flunk out of high school to be able to attend this high school and get accredited high school diplomas. We heard so many different stories, including one individual who spoke in reference to his family basically kicking him out from his house and how he went to sleep at another friend's house throughout his high school career. And if it wasn't for his girlfriend and her family who kind of took him in, he wouldn't be able to accomplish and have somewhere to live. So it just goes to speak of one of the stories of how this Simon Youth Academy truly is making a difference in our youth across the County of Union that those who participated in it. And also, as you know, we have June, so many people are graduating from elementary, middle school, high schools, so congratulating each single one of them on their accomplishments. Everyone's path is different, but what is the same is the required hard work and discipline that goes into each journey. Whether you're going to college, honoring your skills or trade, or going to technical school, we truly wish you much success in the future. Thank you very much, Chair.
You're very welcome. Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Thank you, Chair. I also was able to attend the Lesniak Institute for Recovery High School graduation last week with Chairman, Commissioner Mirabella. And again, it's really amazing, the opportunities that our students have here in Union County to complete their education. This high school allowed several individuals to graduate and recover from drug and alcohol addiction or work with them on their recovery, lifelong recoveries. But it was so inspiring to hear their stories and know that this particular program, which is also a Simon program, really saved their life and offered them a future that may not have been possible otherwise. The Union County Board of Commissioners and the City of Raway are proud to present a live performance of the Broadway hit musical Head Over Heels at the main stage of the Union County Performing Arts Center in Raway next Thursday, June 30th, at 7:30 p.m. This performance is part of a series of events hosted by the Commissioner Board in recognition of Pride Month. Head Over Heels follows the adventures of a royal family on an outrageous journey to save their beloved kingdom from extinction. You'll meet a king about to lose his throne, a queen about to lose her inhibitions, and two princesses about to find love. It's a modern musical fairy tale where "Once Upon a Time" is right now. Tickets are free of charge as part of Pride Month 2022 in Union County, but seats must be reserved in advance. To reserve a spot, visit ucpac.org. Do not use any other websites to reserve a spot, or you can call the box office at 732-499-8226 to reserve your free tickets. All COVID-19 safety regulations are in effect for all performances, and you can visit the UCPAC website for more information on that. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair. We, I attended a number of observances of Juneteenth in the last couple of weeks and just wanted to acknowledge what a good job all of our county staff have done with setting these up and thank Chair Williams for addressing us and giving us the history. They're all very, very moving ceremonies, including the flag raising. I want to update everyone on our purchase of the vacant property in Berkeley Heights located at 735 Springfield Avenue. Last Friday, the county closed on the property and completed this acquisition, so that land is now part of the Passaic River Parkway, a county park that follows the Passaic River from Berkeley Heights to New Providence and into Summit. Funding for the acquisition was provided by the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. The official closing marks the end of a long process, and this, this parcel helps to complete the Passaic River Parkway and making it a connecting greenway between the three municipalities and beyond. So thanks to everyone who contributed to the success of this effort, and we will continue to improve and expand access to parklands in our county community. I would like to add my congratulations to all of our students who have graduated or are soon to graduate this month, and wish them all a good summer and wish them well in their future. And I imagine some of them will be in our Union County parks over the summer. Parks are open and operating and offering lots of open space for all kinds of sports and activities, walking, bicycling, swimming, playing on the playground. Every time I go to one of our parks, I see a lot of happy children. So thanks to our park staff, and that is it for me, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. I too would like to, to make two comments first. I'd like to congratulate all of the graduates of the year 2022 and wish them well in their further pursuits. Excuse me. And secondly, I'd like to apologize to, to the public for my error in not stipulating that the, the grants that were received by the county were outside of the Union County tax levy. They were not Union County dollars. That was just a simple error on my part. So further, Union County would like to remind residents of various recycling events scheduled throughout the county in the up and coming weeks. Residents with old metal gutters, fencing, appliances to dispose of can bring these items and more to free scrap metal recycling drop-off sites. The scrap metal recycling program is sponsored by the Union County Board of County Commissioners and takes place twice each month from April through November. Scrap metal drop-off will be accepted Thursday, July 7th, and Saturday, July 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at two free drop-off centers. Cranford, the Emergency Services Building at 151 Kennelworth Boulevard, and in Raway, Raway River Park off of St. George's Avenue. In addition, Union County residents can bring their personal documents and sensitive papers to the next free paper shredding events. The next two events will take place during June 25th in Scotch Plains and on June, I mean, excuse me, July 7th in Raway. Each shredding event begins at 9:00 a.m. and ends at 1:00 p.m., rain or shine, but may finish earlier if the shredding trucks are filled to capacity. The mobile paper shredding locations are Saturday, June 25th, at Union County VOTEC, West Hall Police Academy Parking Lot, 1776 Raritan Road, Scotch Plains. Thursday, July 7th, Raway River Park, Raway Parking Lot adjacent to Park Service Yard off of St. George's Avenue. Participants are reminded, pre-shredded damp or wet paper will not be accepted. Bindings, large plastic, or metal clips and other paraphernalia should be removed. For a full list of all recycling events, accepted materials for recycling at each of the event and all county recycling programs, residents can visit www.ucnj.org/recycling. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of notes. I want to add a little bit to Commissioner Moody's comments on the Recovery High School graduation that she and I both attended and represented the board at. And in addition to the vocational school partnership and Simon Youth Academy, we'd be remiss if we didn't add Prevention Links, who are significant partners in the curriculum and working with former state senate. and working with former State Senator Lesniak, whose name is actually on that high school, Lesniak Recovery High School. The Senator continues to give back to the state in areas that he has significant interest, and recovery is one of those areas. And I was very proud to be there with Commissioner Mouded when we saw five of the six graduates in person obtain their high school diploma and a fresh start. So it was wonderful to be there. I appreciate the Commissioner to be there. I applaud the Vocational School, the Board of Education, and all the members who were in attendance. Last Saturday, I had the honor to attend the opening with many of my colleagues, Chair Williams, Commissioner Mouded, Commissioner Granados, and Commissioner Leon, I believe, were all present at Temikee Park. And I don't want to steal your thunder, Madam Chair, you may have further comments on that, but just to say that it was a terrific, welcoming, inclusive space, and I was proud to be there, cut the ribbon with my colleagues, and to really see an inclusive park open to everyone of any background, ethnicity, and just wonderful to be there. The playground is an inclusive playground, and it just was terrific. So I share my joy in participating in that. Earlier this afternoon, Madam Chair, you and Commissioner Garrettson and I attended the press conference for the naming, the change of the name of Union County College to Union College of Union County, New Jersey. Jamie Siegel, who was in the audience and a great partner at the college with this county, organized that event and did a terrific job. Jamie, thank you for what you do there. But I know that we heard from the Chair of the Board, Vic Richel, and the President McMenamin, and, you know, as a result of their ideas as far as taking the stigma away from calling it a county college more to a community college, I think was, you know, in their mind, the right thing and were supportive, and we'll have to see if it brings additional students, and we hope it will. But I was happy to be there for that announcement, and more to follow on that. Also, just quickly, I'd like to share a moment about something that's very important, an important healthcare resource located right here in Union County. I recently had a chance to take a tour of the Sharing Network with Chair Williams at the building in New Providence, and a couple of weeks before, I went to their fundraising event. They have a significant walk where thousands of people come out and walk and raise money. I think they raised over a million dollars to support the Sharing Network, which has to do with transplants, people that are giving and people that are receiving. The Deputy Mayor in Scotch Plains is significantly involved in that. Elizabeth Stamler, I appreciate her efforts. She's on the Board of Directors there. It's a federally designated nonprofit organization responsible for recovering donated organ and tissues in the state of New Jersey. This year, the Sharing Network is celebrating its 35th anniversary of saving and enhancing lives. New Jersey Sharing Network works with hospital partners and transplant centers to support donor families throughout this experience. In New Jersey, there are nearly 4,000 residents waiting for life-saving transplants. Nationwide, there's more than 100,000 people waiting. Seventeen die per day waiting for a transplant. Transplantable organs include hearts, kidneys, liver, lungs, pancreas, intestines. Transplantable tissue includes corneas, heart valves, skin grafts, bone grafts, ligaments, and tendons. Every nine minutes, another person is added to the waiting list. Just one organ and tissue donor can save eight different lives and enhance the lives of over 75 people. We encourage residents to have a conversation with their family and friends about the decision to register as an organ and tissue donor. I myself am an organ donor. Residents wishing to learn more can get involved or register to be an organ or tissue donor at www.njsharingnetwork.org. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair. That concludes my comments.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mirabella. I just have a couple of comments. As was stated earlier, yeah, there were a number of Juneteenth events. I attended a fantastic event in Roselle at Warrenonco Park by the Legacy Foundation. It was a great partnership with the Township of Hillside for their Juneteenth celebration. Here in Union County, we had our flag raising, which was very successful and beautiful, I would say. I'm really glad that a bunch of commissioners were able to attend. And we also had a concert in the park that evening, which was packed, and everyone had a wonderful time listening to the Prince Experience Purple Madness. There was beautiful weather. It was a little windy on Saturday, but beautiful weather throughout the weekend for these events, and I'm really happy. I just wanted to add, you know, things that we have said before, but I think they bear saying again. You know, our county does make great strides and strives always to make sure that everyone who is here feels at home and that everyone knows that all of our resources are for everyone. So last Saturday, as Commissioner Mirabella stated, it really was a privilege and an honor to be with my colleagues as we attended our Pride in the Park event and cut the ribbon on our new inclusive park called Temikee Park. This word, if you've been reading, means welcome or come in, and it was designed, the park is designed with the idea to make all residents feel included and accepted. It's a welcoming space, and this Leni Lenapi word is really just to honor our native Leni Lenapi inhabitants who were the first in the area. We know that parks play a very important role in our lives. What we do with our leisure time should be of utmost importance to us, and we as a county are very aware of that. And freedom of expression is one of those things. Public parks, excuse me, parks, these, the idea of having a public park is that the entire public, no matter their religious or nonreligious belief, the color of their skin, their age, their physical abilities, sexual orientation, gender expression or identity, that everyone feels safe and has access to a safe space. As you all know, LGBTQ people in particular have been oppressed and discriminated against, you know, and this continues to have a very, very strong impact on health and well-being. And studies show that LGBTQ folks, especially youth, and LGBTQ folks with special needs in particular, are at a much higher rate for, at risk for mental health problems, issues substance abuse, homelessness, and suicide. Transgender individuals and LGBTQ folks of color face even higher risk. So by reaching out, especially to make sure that this community knows that it is included, part of my community, the park, you know, this park supports our goals for Union County to be a welcoming and to maintain its diversity as we also recognize the positive effect on our overall public health and wellness. As some of you know, this park features a purple playground, which is, again, it signifies the color of anti-bullying, and there are intergenerational attractions with regular, you know, what we would call, I guess, traditional playground equipment and ADA-compliant auditory and musical expression facets, as well as the first meditation maze in Union County. There are wide ramps, and for those who attended, and we had a very nice turnout, I was really pleased, especially to see folks using the playground. There are extra wide ramps for wheelchairs. There are swing sets with straps so that folks can, children can feel safe. There are slides that people of all abilities, especially children, can use. This is not so in every park, so I'm glad that we're making, in every park in the state, right? I'm not just talking about our county parks, but a lot of intentionality went into this. We also have a rainbow garden, and that is Dominican garden. That's another Lenapi, Leni Lenapi word that means rainbow. There are three willow trees planted in the shape of a triangle in remembrance of the Jewish community. Some of you may know that LGBTQ folks, homosexual, homosexuals, they would have been called back then, were forced to wear an inverted pink triangle to show their low status, the same way that Jewish people had to wear a yellow star of David, right? So this really is an inclusive park, and everything that I mentioned, all of the attractions in this park means, that's what inclusive means, okay? We have signage that ensures that every child who comes to that park knows they will not, bullying will not be tolerated. They will not be bullied for who they are, their gender expression, their ability, their physical ability. There are no limitations to what any child can do in this, in this park. So I just really wanted to reiterate that. Some of you know that there have been those who were not in favor of this park, but we stand together, and again, I have to acknowledge this board and the initiative in 2018 of Commissioner Granados to ensure that everyone is included. So that concludes those comments. For me, I want to thank my colleagues, and also, we do have a need to go into executive session, so I'll call upon County Council Bergen to make his statement relative to tonight's session.
Thank you, Chair. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. The board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged discussion concerning litigation strategy in the matter of Rivera versus UCPO. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk to the board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the board may retire to executive session. Upon the board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that said, may I have a motion to enter into executive session?
No move, Madam Chair.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative to enter into executive session.
Okay, we're in exec session. See you all later on.